Welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation, commission members ask questions if any, members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item, project, and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commission discusses each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issue arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member accuses, the supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and plan unit developments, PUDs. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off for mute all cell phones at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. Roll call, myself present, Ms. Libby Latham.
Here.
Ms. Jennifer Denson.
Here.
Mr. Jay Stubbs.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions. Mr. Alan Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Besrich.
Here.
Mr. Don Hembry.
Here.
We have a quorum. We have our agenda before us. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Properly move to second. Any discussion? All in favor of adoption of the agenda is printed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Starting with holdovers, we have item number one, 33 King's Way, more subdivision, which is recommended for denial. Is applicant present?
Good afternoon. Brett Orrell with Poly Surveying, representing the applicant. We were here a few weeks, weeks back, and at that time briefly discussed what we were submitting to you. Since then, we got the information to the staff and look at, to look at the overall viewpoint of surrounding properties. And in part of your package, you will see one item that I prepared to illustrate along with the narrative in regards to other irregular shaped lots in the area. Specifically, there are quite a few flag lots, which are not typically something the commission has taken, likes to have in the city. While this was done years ago, they do exist. Also, there, there, there's eight of those in the general vicinity. There's also several lots that have this, what we're here before you asking for, which is this link to width ratio. Now, it may be in the opposite configuration where you have 100 foot, say, on the frontage. It does pinch point down to anywhere from 60 to 70 feet, and I've illustrated that in five different cases in and around. Specifically, the closest one being in the same block, on the same corridor, same road that backs up to the country club. So, that lot in particular has 100 foot of frontage, and it's just right under 70 feet at the country club there. So, our property sits in a unique spot in which it's in a very significant curve in the road, very similar to what you would see in a traditional subdivision, or maybe a cul-de-sac, in which frontage is, is limited, but yet, as you get further in the back, where the, where the property in this particular case is the most valuable, most desirable along the golf course, exceeds well over 120 feet, or 110 feet in places. So, we feel that, that while this other condition exists on the frontage, the curve, if this was a straight road, just running due east, and the country club didn't exist, based on this development, it would have had ample frontage. We've got tons of room on the back of this property to develop large, large homes, and we feel that it, it meets that consistency along the country club, where, where someone would want to build a home and have a view of the golf course. So, with those, those being said, we are, we are asking that the, the submittal as, as proposed, that meets most, most criteria. The length to width is one that we're asking for a waiver of. We also put a 35 foot setback, which is more than a traditional 25 foot setback. At that location, we exceed 60 feet of buildaway area. That's traditional to any newly subdivided lot. It would, it would meet any setback requirements of the city. So, that's where we have proposed that, that setback line. So, what you have before you is a three lot subdivision, and we're asking that it be considered for approval. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
So, Mr. Orrell, what is the width of the lots on King's Way at the point where they made the road?
Okay, yes. Sorry about that. So, the, the westernmost lot, one, Lot One, is 60 feet. The other two lots are right under, I believe it's 54 feet, 54 and a half, so right under 55 feet. So, traditionally, you know, in a, in a normal subdivision with traditional configuration, you would have 60 foot at, at the, at the road. But cul-de-sacs all over the city, even new subdivisions, wouldn't necessarily have that as long as you provide the buildable setback at the setback line to be exceed 60 feet, which we do in this case. So, so that is, that is what is illustrated here. So, if, if that has to be waived in any sense, I don't believe it has to, but if it, if it does, I do want to point out the map that I did present actually showed, showed as you get further in the back of the property, we have substantial room, you know, to build a home. I think, I, I think at the back portion of the lot, you know, we've got close to 100 feet, you know, now anywhere from 95 to 100 feet of buildable width, and that's not all the way back to the, to the rear property line. So, I illustrated that on the, to show you both of those options, at the setback versus as you got further back into the property, more than likely where homes would be built, because these are more estate, you know, setback, set homes.
I've got a quick question for staff. The applicants mentioned that this type of lot is approved on a cul-de-sac a lot of times, however, from what I can tell, this is not a cul-de-sac. Am I to presume the reason we allow these type of lots on cul-de-sacs is a lesser traffic concern?
Typically, the width to, often, the width to depth ratio, which is three and a half times the width of the lot, frequently staff does recommend when it is in character with the surrounding area. If you look in your staff report, I'm sorry, it's not in the overhead, Mr. Orrell is the last map you have on this application. Mr. Orrell did color code some sites in the area. The ones in orange are flag shaped lots, but they're not even on King's Way. They're up here on Crossway. The others down in Lakewood, which does not even connect to this area. The other three green lots, the width to depth ratio is calculated at the building frontage line. Those lots shown in green, further down the street, on King's Way, almost at Rochester, and then over at this cross street leading up to Wilkinson Way, those actually comply. We don't have an existing situation along King's Way where there's been a re-subdivision that doesn't comply with those standards.
Thank you.
The, it's two lots now?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Orrell, I believe it's a lot and a half.
I'd say closer to one and three quarters. What happened at some point, I think I mentioned in the last meeting, this subdivision was done years and years ago. There was a re-subdivision that took place on the western side, and Ms. Moore, I believe the original owner, Ms. Moore, or maybe her husband, they decided because of the drainage that was there, it didn't make sense to continue to own property on the other side of that drain. So, they shifted the line to where the creek or the drain was at one time.
The 15 foot, yeah.
And, and, and then at some point, either the, the city or someone stepped in and improved that drainage, you know, through there. So, that's what the intent was. It was kind of unused land for them. They couldn't even access it really. It was across a drainage ditch, and so they shifted that line. So, it's more like one and three quarters of a lot is what I, or is what I would say versus two. These are, you know, in the area, there are, you know, pretty good lots, lot widths. The, the biggest thing is that you see along the, along the country club, it has that severe, almost 90 degree turn, which creates this big swath of land at the back. And so, you know, it's, it's substantially, you know, it, it exceeds, or at least meets all of the lots along, along this corridor of the country club.
If it was, this is for the staff. If this was to be redesigned with two lots, make, make it work?
It would still need a waiver, but the, the violation of what you're waiving would be lesser, because what you have right now, this, I believe, from here to this dashed line here is an existing lot.
Right.
Then from this dashed line over is a part of what was an original lot when the country club was developed, was platted in the 1920s.
Where, where's the house now? What sits on the block?
It's...
No house? Yeah, there is.
More or less on the existing legal lot of record. You have a part of a, a lot with the balance of it over on this property.
So, to make the three, obviously, that house was going to be razed?
Yes.
It would be, it would be demolished.
That's what I meant. Yeah, right.
Can you go back to the ones we've mentioned, someone a second? So, I see the 60, 54, 7, 64, 7. What's in our books? So, 69, 60.
Yeah.
It just looks different, and we actually see a 50 foot setback.
That must have been the previous, the previous. It was submitted, correct? So, what is, what is represented there is, is true. It's true, correct?
I'm sorry. Yeah, he did submit a revision.
That lets me go to the question I'm going to ask you. Was there any consideration to create a common area in front of all of those three lots? That really, maybe they don't allow one driveway through it off of King's Way that then ransched out. Because it does become problematic in a car with that many driveways, and then any of the other property owners did the same thing. Next time, you know that we're going to have a, we'll have driveways on top of driveways on top of driveways, where you, because you have a longer line, if there was any consideration given to creating a common parcel, they could allow one lot, one driveway to come in, and then it would branch off at some point within that common parcel there. If you get that any thought, but it is a little problematic with the inner curve that tight.
I mean, to be honest, I, it wasn't even a consideration. It didn't register with me to even consider that.
And then the other piece of that, too, something I think you said about large houses, you know, I know obviously, that probably doesn't know what size houses that are there, but this is a full blown subdivision with downstream drainage, a lot of downstream drainage has been worked on, so we'd be looking for, you know...
Full compliance, land disturbance?
Small footprints or tension marks.
Right, right. I mean, that's very, I mean, it's pretty much every house in Spring Hill now is having that effect.
Some things I think you need to figure out.
Sure. And, and that conversation has been had.
60 foot lot to the west, the 15 foot drainage easement is part of that 60 feet?
Correct.
So, the, you've got 45, and then your side setback for your building side?
You'd only have one side setback, which would be eight feet on, on the other side. So, and it's actually at that, at the width of the setback, I believe it's, one second, I'm sorry. It's, it's right at 65 feet.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? Is there anyone else here to speak for this application? Is there anyone here to speak against this application?
Mr. Chairman, if I may draw attention to the commission, you each have a packet or some additional correspondence regarding opposition and concerns to this application in addition to what you received at the last meeting from Wayne and Stephanie Fink, the residents of 20 King's Way, Judy Campbell, and Beverly Davis.
Question for staff, if Mr. Omburger's recommendation, would the width to depth ratio start where the new property line was pushed back, or would it start at the street?
To be honest with you, to my way of thinking, Nick, all those waivers would still be required because you're still constricting further down the property frontage.
I think you still might be in a waiver situation, but you could at least...
Eliminate driveways. Correct. And I believe you'd really be looking at a private street subdivision, which would also require a PUD.
Okay, thank you. Item number two from holdovers, 1503 and 1529 Wolf Ridge Road, sidewalk waiver. Staff recommends denial of the waiver. Is the applicant present? Did your...
If I may speak to the house, perhaps an engineer, he's, he's in no way not a, he's in favor of building the sidewalk. He has some concerns about where they could be built. I think we've answered that question for him. There will be a piece of it that's within the range of this property that's probably a little too excessive for a private developer to build. If it was a large cul-de-sac, a garbrel, something that would probably be more appropriate for the city to do in a future project, but, but the bulk of this property is running, probably 95% of it, I think he's willing to build the sidewalk. Happy to do so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak for or against this application?
I do have a question about that. Ms. Papas, based on what Mr. Omburger just said, since the waiver is to waive the whole sidewalk, how, I mean, how, how do we carve that out?
I would suggest that the commission table it. That way, when working with city engineering, when they get to that 5%, if a waiver is still needed, it can be brought back before the commission for that portion.
Table that one?
And do we just table that with a motion?
Yes.
Table it or hold it over?
Table.
Renice the waiver, but just deny the waiver that requires the sidewalk to be constructed
in accordance with engineering requirements.
I just want to make sure I understand, because it was my understanding you were saying there's a little bit of it that might need to be waived.
There's a, there's a, there's a piece of it. I think, I think in general, denying the waiver with the conditions that you work with engineering, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's the way we should say it, Ben.
Yeah.
You should probably say it that way.
I think that specificity is needed, because...
So, not a table?
Could we approve the waiver just for that portion?
You would deny it. You would deny the waiver. And then, if there is any portion that can't be built, we will bring it back up administratively. Because it is my understanding the applicant is willing to build all of it. It was that one portion at the north, there's some severe topo, and a service road right of way. It wasn't a clear cut.
It's probably a couple hundred, a couple hundred feet of that much, where there's some garbrel on the road.
So, it would be working with the engineering department as they pulling permits, then? Yes, ma'am. And it wouldn't involve coming back? Correct.
We could, we could characterize it to the south end of the existing garbrel on the, on the west side. I mean, that's, I know that's not a linear dimension, but that is...
That is definition.
Yeah. We'll look for your statement.
New subdivision applications, item number three, 31 Hillwood Road, Vickers Place subdivision, re-subdivision of Lot Three, recommended for approval. Is the applicant present?
I'm Joe Courtney. My aunt owns that piece of property, and it's been tentative approval. I don't know whether you guys need to talk to me or not. I'm not familiar with it, but I appreciate your vote.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for this?
Thank you to the commission. I am Dr. William Hayes. I live at One Vickers Place, which is the house adjoining just to the east of the property, and I am for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. For the record, the applicant is in agreement with all the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Item number four, 3836 Gordon John Drive, recommended for approval. Mr. Cameron is recused. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Is there anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number five, 70720 Museum Drive, Fort Hardabin subdivision, recommended for approval. Ms. Latham is recused. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Ma'am, did I speak past you, you on accident? Oh, okay, sorry. Item number six, 7232 Old Military Road, Williams Family subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New planning approval applications, item number seven, 4610 Spring Hill Avenue, Spring Hill Animal Clinic, recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes, sir. One thing that we do need to mention...
Alan Williams with Element Three Engineering. On the narrative, we said that the workable hours were from Monday to Thursday until 5:30. That is their current work schedule. When they move to this building, they would like the opportunity to possibly go into that Friday, and that would be it. And they would close at 5:30 at that point.
Is that an issue, staff? Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? You're speaking for, correct?
For, yes. My name is Mary Edmonds from Spring Hill Animal Clinic. We've purchased the building, and I think, you know, the, the issue was the dog area in the back, and I just wanted to confirm with everyone that no dogs will be left out there unattended. They will all be leash walked. The fence is merely security. Should one slip away, they're not running into traffic. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New sidewalk waiver applications, item number eight, 4800 Moffett Road, Board of Water Sewer Commissions, waiver is recommended for approval. The applicant present? Are you in agreement with the approval? All right, thank you. Anyone here to speak against this? Thank you. Group applications, item number nine, Warren Adhesive Subdivision, 7858, 7860 and 7900 Ziegler Boulevard, both parts recommended for approval. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. Jury Bird, Bird Surveying Company, 2609 Halls Mill Road, representing the applicant, oh, the, yeah, applicant, owner. Two of the conditions, actually, number one in the subdivision, number one in the PUD. We had asked for a 20 foot setback where the building's going to be. Oh, by the way, you have one of these, I think, in front of you. That is the existing building that's there, which indicates the roof overhang. The face of the building is 24 feet from the property line right now. We backed off to 20 foot building setback to allow for the extension of the building to the east and still be able to have a overhang on the front. We asked that it goes back to the 20 on the building setback. And in the PUD, I think it's condition four, yes, about the drive and parking areas to be asphalt or concrete. This was an existing site prior to ever coming in to the city, being annexed into the city, whether they wanted to be or not. We're asking that the aggregate remain. We can delineate the spaces with parking bumpers, and shouldn't be a problem at all. Other than that, I think we're okay.
The staff have any issues with...
Since this is a PUD, and there is an expansion, we were looking to try and get some upgrade to the existing aggregate parking. The setback for, what is there is there, and we have frequently altered setbacks to accommodate existing structures, so there's... existing structures, so there's no issue with title and transfer of property in the future. However, we like to see that any new construction comply with the setback. The building face could be at the twenty-five foot, proper, new building face could be at the twenty-five foot line, and then the zoning ordinance specifically allows a two-foot overhang into that setback. So that is the rationale for those two recommendations in the staff report regarding the upgrade to the parking and the proposed setback line.
And that's B three now, right?
Yes, sir. Additionally, all of the parking's aggregate, what is the situation with your handicap spaces?
I don't know.
Margaret, I'd like you to go back one more time and address that overhang issue again. I want to make sure I'm following you.
Okay. On an existing site, we are not looking for those buildings to be brought into compliance with the setback, nor do we want a setback line on the final plat to conflict with what's on the ground. So we frequently have setback lines that kind of move along the property line. We would ask, however, any new structures comply with that twenty-five foot setback line. The point I would make in regard, and this is kind of a good visual, that facade with the new, with the twenty-five foot setback line could be built at twenty-five feet, and then you could have an overhang extend two feet beyond that.
So the current building is at the twenty-four foot mark?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that's right.
And you're wanting to build the addition so that it's in line with the front of that building?
Right.
And carry on down. But in order to do that, we've got to have, we've got to push it back in order to...
You would, you, to accommodate his request, basically you'd have a twenty-four foot setback line across most of the property, at least in front of the existing and proposed addition. It'd be twenty-four feet.
So the new addition would have to set back an additional two feet from where the front of the building currently is?
At least a foot, yes. At least twenty-five. Now, because this is a PUD, the commission can alter that requirement. It would not necessitate going to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So the commission can approve this addition at twenty-four feet, and then the corresponding setback line recorded on the plat would then be twenty-four feet.
If we can build across smooth and still be legal with an overhang that equals what we have, it may be two and a half feet. They can waive two feet, but if it's two and a half, we could do, uh, how about a three-foot overhang be twenty, twenty-one? I guess they can make it work at twenty-two, twenty-two foot setback in lieu of twenty-four foot setback and keep it legal.
I think if the commission decides to, to cor, to respond to Mr. Bird's request, probably the best way to put it is that the setback line and additions extend no closer than the frontmost building.
Yes, so Margaret, I understand what you're trying to shuttle up there is that across most of the property, it would be twenty-five feet.
Right.
You've adjusted it in to twenty-four feet where the existing building is.
Correct.
So that the proposed building, which I guess wants to line up with it, would be the twenty-four feet, so that's why the staff recommendation says twenty-four feet.
Yes.
So I guess the question to the applicant is that, is that what your, Margaret's saying the staff recommendations allow you to build it this way with the fronts of the buildings line up? Is that what you're...
Yeah, we wanted the buildings to line up. Honestly, I thought overhangs, porches, or anything had to be behind the building setback.
You get to, per the zoning ordinance, overhangs can extend two feet.
Two feet.
So having twenty-two feet will give you what you need?
Yeah.
And your existing building doesn't, I mean, that doesn't look like, I mean, that looks like that might be two feet, but it doesn't look like...
Well, yeah, two, two and a half, probably.
The side looks deeper than that.
It's hard to tell.
So you're basically trying to get a waiver for the overhang?
So the setback goes to where the awning stops?
The setback goes to the facade if the overhang does not extend more than two feet forward.
Can I ask a question? On Ziegler Boulevard, is this being widened now? Is that part of the plans for widening?
Yes.
Is this part of the widening project, Nick?
Where this is located?
Just west of Schillinger.
If I may speak, Mr. Chairman, I did talk to Mobile County Engineering about this segment, and they are doing it through the pay-as-you-go from Schillinger out to Tanner Williams.
Probably not, so I suspect that their widening is to the south.
Right. We did look at their drawings. All that they will need for this site that Mr. Bird has brought is a temporary construction easement.
Just lay down stuff, okay. And let's talk about, there's a new entrance that's proposed in the plan unit development. Do I have that right? Can we go back to the one that shows it said? See, it says, "Future Drive." So is that now rocks and stuff, or was the staff looking to get this all asphalted so it comes into city code for parking on a B three?
We're looking for a, a degree of compliance for paved parking for this site. The existing area here, while, while, as it exists, it's legal non-conforming in terms of its use and in terms of its development. Because they're adding an addition, we are looking at least for compliance with paved parking for the vehicles, the automobiles, not necessarily the truck traffic.
Okay, so anything that kind of fronts Ziegler?
Yes, ma'am.
And there, hopefully this county's going to build a sidewalk too, because that's pretty big on Ziegler. What is in front of the, where the new building's going? Is that, that's aggregate, you said? It's not paved?
No, that's asphalt.
So... Okay, so that was already going to be asphalted and made into parking, or it's a drive?
That's existing asphalt.
So the area in question is that where you're showing the parking spaces across Ziegler and where the, where the aggregate is written there now?
And the new drive. It's like gravel.
I'm all for, you know, trying to accommodate and give, give what's needed for the, for the building, for sure, and trying to find a way to set that, set that up so that you can build as your plan is showing.
Yeah.
Not like the previous, but there, yeah, getting what you need there, because, you know, you've already got that line established, so if we can find a way to accommodate that, I think that's a, a good compromise.
Yeah, I think that's what Margaret's saying, is that handling for the field, so the point is four feet.
Because the, the awning can have an overhang into the easement. And that awning that you have there now is two feet? It looks deeper than that.
Had measured two, two and a half, I think.
But I think Margaret's pre, excuse me, Margaret's previous suggestion would keep us from worrying about the size of the existing awning, in case they get out there and find that it's not, they're not in trouble. Yeah.
Match it. Yeah, that, get that part. This is not asphalt. Do you want that to become, the, where the building is?
Where, where you have aggregate and all of your vehicular parking for employees, customers, we were looking for that to be brought into compliance.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing.
Any other questions by commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you, sir. Item number ten, one sixty-one, Dog, Wo-Wo Wood Lane, St. Paul's Episcopal School subdivision, recommended for tentative approval, all three sections. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. That closes our public session, and we'll now go into deliberation, beginning with our holdovers. Item number one, thirty-three Kings Way, staff recommends tentative denial. Is there a motion?
Not tentative.
So moved?
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is denied. Item number two, fifteen oh three and fifteen twenty-nine, Wolf Ridge Road, sidewalk waiver is recommended for denial. Is there a motion?
So moved?
May I amend? The amendment, uh, denied with the exception of the length defined by the south end of the existing arborum and the west side.
I would amend my motion to reflect what the standard is.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Denial with exception is granted. New subdivision applications. Item number three, thirty-one Hillwood Road, Vickers Place subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
May I, Mr. President, subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item number four, thirty-eight, thirty-six, Gordon John Drive, recommended for approval. Mr. Cameron's recused. Is there a motion?
Moved to appro, approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed. Item number five, seven hundred and seventy, Museum Drive, Fort Hardeman subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. Ms. Latham is recused. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion?
I, I just have a question. When you, when you look at the map, it goes right into that new circle, the, the lot line? So is that part of the vacation that you all talking about have to be applied for?
I think it's an issue of scale, but if there's, um... Oh, I'm sorry, they're dedicating. Yes.
Where the lot goes out to that?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Yeah, no, I see it on this, that's why I asked. But they talked about vacation, so we're not asking for a vacation. Is there a vacation needed on this?
No, ma'am.
I thought it said they had to...
We're actually acquiring.
Yeah, so, but I thought the language read something about it needing a vacation, so that, maybe I'm getting it confused with some other one, but I thought the word vacation was, that's why I questioned it. I could be not saying I didn't mix it up. Okay. Yeah, we don't want them hauling off that Spring Hill statue. It's gonna be a bad thing. Okay, thanks. It's fine. Okay, I got it. I got it now, thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed. Item number six, seventy-two, thirty-two, Old Military Road, Williams Family subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. New planning approval applications. Item number seven, forty-six, ten, Spring Hill Avenue, Spring Hill Animal Clinic, recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, and C. Changing condition number one to allow operation on Friday as well.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed. New sidewalk waiver applications, forty-eight hundred Moffett Road, Board of Water Sewer Commissioners, waiver is recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed. Waiver is granted. Group applications. Item number nine, seventy-eight fifty-eight, seventy-eight sixty, seventy-nine hundred, Ziegler Boulevard, Warren adhesive subdivision, subdivision and PUD, both recommended for tentative approval. We'll take them separately. Part A subdivisions recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Question for staff first, please, just before we make the motion, I mean, if we, so we leave the condition number one on the subdivision and condition number, I think it was one on the PUD as well, at twenty-four feet, that will allow the applicant to construct their building as, as is across the front.
I will say, and I don't think Mr. Bird would feel insulted, I don't think the twenty-four feet gave him a lot of confidence. I would be, staff would be agreeable to saying that the setback line for the existing buildings and the new proposed building addition be the same.
Okay.
Twenty-five feet for the balance.
Can we say that the front overhang and front setback of any new construction so much?
Lines up.
Yes.
And I'd move to approve the subdivision based on staff recommendations, allowing the, the new addition to be in line and with the existing building for, for the subdivision.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion?
And the conditions and prove that front parking to... That's in there, right? That, that's not, that's, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item A passes. Item B, PUD, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve, subject to staff recommendations, without the fact of the facts, A, B, C, E, F.
Second.
And changing condition one?
It is not by the condition.
Okay, same, okay.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed. Item number ten, one sixty-one, Dogwood Lane, St. Paul's Episcopal School, three parts, subdivision, PUD, and planning approval, all recommended for approval. We'll take it in three parts. Part A subdivision approval. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item A passes. Item B, PUD, is there a motion?
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, C, D, and F.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed. Item C, planning approval. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item pass. That concludes our deliberation session. Other business, action plan update for the map of Mobile.
My apologies. Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to the other business item?
Yes.
Commissioners, if you recall, back in 2015, you were, your role was very pivotal in helping us to adopt the Map for Mobile Comprehensive Plan. An associated element of that plan was our action plan. That action plan outlined, outlined a series of objectives and goals that the city wanted to accomplish based on feedback that we heard from the public, to make sure that our comprehensive plan was a living, breathing document with actionable items associated with it. At that time, over a hundred and twenty-one items were mentioned with, with respect to that plan. Six years later, we're pleased to report that we have either completed or have in progress a hundred and nine actions associated with that plan. So, our, our, your commitment to ensuring that this document stayed a living, breathing document was to come to the commission on a regular and frequent basis, providing you with updates on that document. Last year would have been, would have been the five-year mark, unfortunately, between COVID, COVID and the complexities that came with our interface with the commission and the public, as well as our work with the UDC, we were not able to provide you with that update. So, our goal on June seventeenth is to present you within the, an overview, a summary report of what we've accomplished since 2015, and to provide you with recommendations moving forward for the next five years. So, in the coming days, days, we'll provide you with the action plan report. We'll post that on our website so that the public will have an opportunity to understand and digest that. But on the seventeenth, the staff will present to you an update on that report and hopefully any, use that time to answer any questions that you may have. So, we're just keeping in line with the commitment that we made back in 2015 to ensure that we're being transparent with our efforts as it relates to the Map for Mobile Comprehensive Plan and, and the associated action plan. So, that's it. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you. Any other business to come forth? Hearing, uh, meeting adjourned.